So, good morning and welcome to the pre-agenda interview for Wednesday, October 4th, 2023. We have Mr. Gregory Kotler here today for an appointment for the Citizens Police Review Board. I'm currently joined by Councilwoman Barbara Warwick. Would a clerk please read the title of the bill?
Bill 1897, Resolution Appointing Gregory Kotler as a member of the City Police Review Board with a term to expire October 31st, 2027.
Thank you. With that, Mr. Kotler, we'll allow an opportunity for you to give any opening remarks you would like to, maybe tell us a little bit about yourself, why you're interested in serving, and then we'll turn over to members if they have questions.
Absolutely. First, it's an honor to be here. Thank you very much for having me. Do I need to... there we go. Thank you very much for having me. It's an honor to be here and a privilege to be nominated. I am a lifelong resident of the city of Pittsburgh outside of four and a half years removed in military service. Actually, I grew up in the borough of Mount Oliver, not quite the city of Pittsburgh, but we do consider that the city of Pittsburgh and Mount Oliver in a way. I bleed black and gold. I love the city. I worked for the county elections as judge of elections for my district. I also worked for one of our great cultural institutions, the National Aviary. I am the manager of donor relations position in a place that I love very much.
Thank you. Councilwoman Warwick, do you have any questions or comments?
Yeah, sure. So, I guess so with Citizens Police Review Board, so, I mean, what is your understanding of the job of the review board and what and why are you interested in?
I was asked by Council President Theresa Cale Smith.
Okay.
The Citizen Police Review Board, I feel, is very important to the city. I was in high school when the damage incident happened in 1995 and was not here. I left in 96 and was in the military, but I do understand that the review board was created in 1997, I believe, and to provide oversight is very important. I understand that the board's position is to make recommendations for policy, training, anything to improve the department pertaining to officer behaviors.
Okay.
It's very, very important. I'm very excited to help do anything to make the city of Pittsburgh a better place.
Great. And so, that's interesting that you say that because I, you know, as someone myself who sort of knew to, working with the city, there is, or I find that there is sort of a difficult balance sometimes between like what is protocol, like what is considered appropriate behavior according to the protocol versus what is appropriate behavior as like a member of the public and, you know, so I don't know if you have any thoughts on that? I mean, I don't want to comment. I have a particular incident in mind that we just talked about, you know, on council, but...
Could you expand a little bit?
Well, so, for example, let's say that there's an incident, right, and to look at it, it seems inappropriate from a, you know, whether it be just a layman's or an emotional standpoint or just what you're seeing, right? What just doesn't seem right. It just doesn't seem right, but actually, technically, at least, you know, according to the rulebook, all of the things that were done followed protocol. And I feel like that is a, that's a complicated balance sometimes, and I'm wondering your thoughts, because I think that the review board actually may have a role for dealing with situations like that.
Yeah, I understand that that can be a difficult situation. It's important that the board does have investigators and they look at the entire story, from what I understand, which is really important. You have to understand the whole picture, but at the same time, there may be policies, rules, and procedures in place that obviously need to be looked at and perhaps tweaked in the future.
And I'm also curious, so, this is, and again, you may not have an opinion on this, but I'm interested, so, you know, so much is on camera now, right? Like, everything is on camera. And so, a lot, you know, and officers have cameras on their persons, right? So, everything is being filmed. And a lot of the times, you know, you'll have a civilian film something, but then in the review process, there's this, it's like, well, you know, we need to look at the body camera footage from the officer's perspective, but so often we don't get to see that. And I would be interested, and I know that maybe there's legal protocols that may prohibit that sometimes, but I know that I'm interested in finding ways that we could actually see that footage.
I agree 100%. Yes. Is it policy that they should always have their camera on?
Yes.
Then that would be a problem. Yes, that would need to be looked at.
Yeah. I mean, okay. Anyway, so, these are things that I'm interested in. I'm sure there's many, many, many more things, sort of, you know, diving deep. So, yeah, I welcome and your participation in the board, and I hope that you'll dive into those types of questions, even though they may be tricky, but I think that's the purpose of the review board. So, I'm glad that, you know, you seem open to those.
I do. I'm kind of shocked to hear that that's not in place right now, because, as you mentioned, officer videos, civilian videos, you're only getting snapshots of the true picture. If the officers had their cameras on at all times, that would...
Oh, they do. They have their cameras on. Right.
But you don't have access to the video.
Not that I, I mean, I don't know. I mean...
So, excuse me. The policy sort of varies. There have been instances where I have in private video.
Okay.
That wasn't necessarily made available for the public. So, it depends, but there's not, to my knowledge, a hard and fast policy of this will always be made available.
Yeah, I mean, I feel like, if we don't mind a little discussion, it just, I think too, that it could also, I mean, and probably would benefit our officers in many situations, right? Because they, I mean, their video is the video of what they saw. And so, you know, when they're maintaining that the way that they handled the situation was appropriate and the only option or the best option or whatever, if the public were able to see that version versus the version that may not have shown everything, that would, I think, would be helpful for everybody, just to get the full picture in this day and age of everything being on camera.
Yes, I agree with that. With your last statement, with this day and age, with everything being on camera, it is important to get as much of the true story out there as possible.
Anyway, well, thanks. I appreciate it. Thanks for the little...
Thanks for the question.
No, thank you. I think part of Councilwoman Warwick was sort of describing examples we've all seen, but not being specific, because in our roles, we sit sort of quasi-judiciary. And so, if there's ever lawsuits or things of that nature to come before us and we provide opinion on it on the front end, we then can't vote on it on the back end. So, she's not giving specific examples, but there are absolutely examples out there that we've seen in recent news, where there's interactions between the police and the public, that if we were just looking at it face value, we go, there's no way that should be acceptable. However, protocol says that it is, and there's a tension there that exists with the CPRB, in part because CPRB, as you noted, was created in 97 after the horrific incident in 95, but it was also done via referendum, right? So, it wasn't something that government or the police said, "This is important." It was something the people said, "This is important." And so, because of that, there's always been a tension in terms of how then CPRB then has its powers and enforcement ability to actually change law within side of the police department as well as enforcement. Even when the CPRB has made recommendation, there's recently, and this is public, so, there's recently, there was an officer that was fired from our police force. And unfortunately, those officers end up going to arbitration, and almost all the time, they get hired back by the city, which just happened recently. So, it's not really a question for you. It's just more of a statement that as you sort of enter this space, just understand that, yes, you may want to look at policy, even as we're talking about always have your cameras on, always make that public, but then there's a tension there that exists and sometimes also created by union contracts to sort of dictate what can and cannot occur. So, that's just more for you to sort of dig into and learn about as you do. Feel free to respond if you want, but it's not really a question. It's just more of a statement. But with that, I thank you for your willingness to serve. Anytime any citizen is willing to step forward and serve in such a critical position, there aren't many who want to. So, when you're interested and willing to, we want to thank you for your willingness to serve. Thank you. Seeing no further members, I'll make a motion to, well, we don't need a motion to adjourn. No. So, this interview is concluded. Thank you. So, good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee meeting for Wednesday, October 4th, 2023. All council meetings will continue to be live streamed on the city's website. Our first order business is roll call. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Burgess.
Here.
Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mrs. Cale Smith.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Mrs. Warwick.
Mr. Wilson.
Mr. Lavelle Chair.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you. Our next order business is public comment. I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before city council, and profanity is not permitted. Once you recall, please restate your name, provide your neighborhood for the record. You'll be given three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker is Naomi Mullen.
Here. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. First, do no harm is not just the rule of medicine. Government shall not harm the people or can be held accountable. Block busting and infliction of emotional distress has occurred against Bon Air. Those who oppose the property owners of Bon Air do so at their own peril. Politicians and municipal employees are public servants. My husband was a dedicated model employee that should be emulated by others. The Pennsylvania State Constitution says that government is created for the peace based in happiness of we, the people. Decisions that harm the people are not acceptable. There are elected and appointed officials that have proven themselves to be enemies of Bon Air. The Public School Board of Education in Pittsburgh has zero regard for the rights of the property owners, taxpayers, citizens, and voters in the Bon Air community. We do not consent to the detrimental school building remaining in our community. We do want the green space to replace the building and improve the location. This is the least that can be done to repair the loss that has occurred. The public servants of the school board shall work with the community to the best of their ability. It was fraudulent to claim that community support approved apartments there. The school board has proven itself as detrimental. Will you be part of the solution? On June 20th, 2022, the detrimental Bon Air school building was into being a disruptive and nuisance property. I've been told multiple times that the school, school board hides the crimes that occur in and around the school. We have objected to apartments or anything other than green space to replace the school. Tear it down. The building is a magnet to youth who broke into additionally truck crossings. Three of the seven had to be exported out of the building, taken out and handcuffed. Tear it down. Other neighborhoods have been blighted with worse. Do not allow it to happen to Bon Air. The outcry to the school board has proven futile. Put pressure on them to sell it to the city for a dollar. Tear it down. Now that McKinley Park is no longer in Bon Air, we want school to become a green space as replacement. Open deals, not shady deals in Bon Air. The WHO is the World Health Organization that is funded primarily from commercial income sources. The Gates Foundation invests in immunization and profit.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Chief Pohmai Chakman-Yahelihi.
I'm Makata Alakitee. The light in me honors the light in you. This is to City Council, the URA, and the Land Bank. The Constitution for the United States of America, Article 1, Section 2, Clause 3 states, and excluding Indians not taxed, and the Bouvier's Dictionary that's adapted to the Constitution to give clear definition of meanings of words within the Constitution states. Indians are the aborigines of this country, are so called, and that an Indian tribe or a nation-state or a nation of Indian people are separate into state, community, or body of the Aboriginal Indians. The race of men found in the United States are Europeans, and you can't find people. You can just meet them. Now, mind you, your ancestors called us Indians, and we accepted the terms for communicative purposes for your lack of being able to pronounce our language. And all Indian treaties entered into prior to 1871 were consummated pursuant to Article 2, Section 2 of the United States Constitution, Article 6, commonly referred to as the Supremacy Clause. And this Constitution and the laws of the United States, which shall be made in pursuance in all treaties made and which shall be made under the authority of the United States, shall be the supreme law of land, and the judges in every state shall be bound by there. And anything in the Constitution or laws of any state, the contrary notwithstanding, statutes, codes, you know, mandates, those things are not laws and don't apply to Aboriginal American people. They don't apply to our people, and we're finding ourselves being subjected by these very things through your police department, violating our rights, which is genocide and punishable by death. We've been very patient. The Northwest Ordinance of 1787, at Article 3, states that the utmost good faith shall always be observed towards the Indians and that their lands and property shall never be taken from them. You're taking our lands without our consent, and they should not be taken without our consent, and that our property and our rights and liberties shall never be invaded and disturbed unless in just and lawful wars authorized by Congress. I don't think city council can authorize a war against Aboriginal people, but the laws founded in justice and humanity shall from time to time be made for preventing wars and wrongdoings being done to our people. You have an opportunity to prevent further injustices from happening to our people in this area, where everyone will be held accountable who does not do the right thing as it relates to our rights. And there's no statute of limitations. So, you leave office, that doesn't matter. And free prior and informed consent must be obtained by our people. You can't continue to do things without including us.
That exhausts our list of registered speakers. If there's anyone in chambers wishing to speak, please come forward at this time, provide your name, neighborhood. You'll be given three minutes to speak.
Hi, I'm Bernadette from Beachview. This is continued from yesterday. Immediately, we need an oversight board monitoring access transdev consisting of two city councils, two Allegheny councils, two Department of Aging, and even governor-appointed staffers to oversee and hold monthly board meetings for transparency and to hear from public. They need an online hotline to report instances. We can set the safety standard in a city that has been moving people by boat, barge, train, incline, buggy, trolley, and buses since the 1800s. The current ePurse access software looks like it was created during floppy disk days. Speaking of software, over and over, I Googled it, there has been consistently only one person, Jeff Joel, software contractor, granted over and over thousands and thousands of dollars. Joel family is multi-generations with Access's S&amp;S Transit. Why no effort for more RFPs? Our city CTE students can create better. The lady senior mentioned yesterday who has been left behind is afraid to complain, saying she needs them. Access Transdev knows this. They heard this, I've heard this over and over from seniors and disabled, afraid to complain. Access Transdev manipulates and controls the lives of your most vulnerable population. They have access to each one of our financial accounts. Every time I make a trip, they ask me for my ePurse PIN number. The software is set up where anyone can access at any time without our knowledge or consent. Why? How? Every tips, every trip called center, that's what happens. They ask for the PIN number. Complaints need to be filed by you for your people. The city of Pittsburgh residents, complaints to State Attorney General, Department of the Aging. Last week, while I was at a medical appointment paid for by medical assistance, I caught by accident while at appointment an unauthorized withdrawal of over $30. That's double dipping. I fought it. I got it put back. But how many other seniors don't know to do that? I still haven't figured out who, it doesn't even say who did it. I ask you, how many other vulnerable seniors and disableds are afraid to speak up, fearing retaliation? How many others don't even know it is happening? How many others who have trust-funded Access ePurse accounts or families who keep adding funds to their ePurse Access account routinely are losing money? Public awareness is your first line of action. Public announcements through the news media, new... can I suppose? Oh. Public awareness at the senior centers.
Your time has expired.
Oh, I thought it was like a warning. Sorry.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live at 715 Mercer Street, up at the top of the hill. Kevy wear Irving's tires. You know what? You, as a council, are being laughed at. You know what they say? That the, you're supposed to start at 10, so 10:15, 10:29, 10:30. Sometime even at 10:30, you still haven't started. And they call that white noise. They said, "You used to making white noise." You see that picture you just got going across the screen? And I had asked years ago that when you don't start at 10, that someone should be saying, "Council will be in session shortly." You used to do it. See, you're just baiting Swift. You used to do it, now you stop. Now, I see here that they had this pre-agenda. Okay, I went and talked to the man, and he sounds like, I called her, he sounds like he would be good for that position, because he does have a lot of background from me listening. But where is his resume? You know, when you just have these people here, do we get a chance to see the resume? I would like to see it, because we hear them talk, but I want to see what else they're doing. But anyway, okay, let me explain something. When I talk about the Whit Walton, who is the county councilman, when I went to down there, he refused to help me, because he told me his best friend, his sister, his friend, his best friend is his sister that lived in the building. Well, she's dead, and that's the one that, when we asked if we could get a bus, and he said, "Well, she would make the appointment." And I said, "But sir," and he knew that we didn't get along. I knew if he said she was going to do it, didn't happen. Now, she's dead, a couple of years. Look at the clot she has. We still can't get transportation. I want you to understand that they had something at the building, and I came down the street, down the hall, and here was Walton. So, I said, "Hey, sir, you remember me?" I said, "I came down here, and you didn't do anything. I'm coming to county council and tell on you." Well, I go down the hall, and that's when John DeFazio's wife was saying, her husband was running for council, and I said, "He's a mean man. You need to talk to him." So, she ran me in there, and we were talking. "Well, here come Walton." You remember I told him I was going to tell on him. Okay, here come Walton. He came in, and we're talking. And when I happened to look up, just this big man, anyway, he looked at me, he started screaming. "I don't appreciate..." I mean, actually screaming at his head, all of us shaking. And they were saying, "No, no, the whip, she's not talking about you. Not talking about you." See, I'm trying to show you that these politicians, especially when they're big, they, a woman like me, even though I have a large, a strong voice, they jump at me. I mean, they actually acted like they want to fight. We did the same thing when... Thank you. Just having a nice...
Thank you. Any further speakers? Any further speakers? Seeing none, that takes us to our standing committee agenda. Our first committee of the day is finance and law, chaired by myself. I'll ask members to offer up a one-week hold after we read the bill.
Bill 1937, Resolution Amending 164 of 2023, which authorized the mayor and the city solicitor on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to enter into a professional services agreement with Loeb and Loeb LLP for legal services related to real estate matters by increasing the total spend by $250,000 for a new not exceed amount of $400,000 over one year.
Motion to hold one week.
Motion to hold one week, please.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill be held one week. That takes us to our new papers, the first being Bill 1973.
Bill 1973, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of Two Warrants in Favor of Plaintiff Donald W. Waldorf and His Attorneys Drexler Law LLC at a Cost Not to Exceed $150,000 Over Two Years in Full and Final Settlement of Litigation Including Attorneys' Fees and Costs.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 1974.
Bill 1974, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Owen M. Sullivan in the Amount of $11,592.68 Over One Year Relating to the Full and Final Settlement of Charges Filed with EEOC.
Motion to approve, please.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That takes us to Bill 1978.
Bill 1978, Resolution Repealing an Item in Resolution Number 344 of 2018, Effective Date, June 12th, 2018, in Order to Rescind the Sale.
Motion to approve. Discussion, please.
Second.
Discussion, councilman?
For you, just for you, Mr. Chair.
Sure. This is simply a matter of a woman who had put down hand money to purchase a city property, but is no longer interested in purchasing that city property. So, we're going to rescind the sale, and then she's, her intent is to put hand money down for a separate property.
Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Need a motion to approve the invoices.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Invoices have been approved. Need a motion to approve the P-cards. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? P-cards are approved. That takes us to Public Safety and Wellness Committee, chaired by Councilman Coghill. We have one new paper, Bill 1956.
Bill 1956, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Public Safety to Enter Into an Agreement or Agreements with the Federal Emergency Management Agency for the Purpose of Receiving and Spending Grant Funds in the Amount of $269,954.54, with a Local Match of $26,995.45 for the Purchase of Ventilation Saws and Fans for Vehicles.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That takes us to Public Works and Infrastructure Committee, chaired by Councilman Kraus. Our first new paper is Bill 1966.
Bill 1966, Resolution Authorizing an Interdepartmental Transfer in the Amount of $200,000 From the Bureau of Operations Within the Department of Public Works to the Bureau of Facilities Within the Department of Public Works. This transfer is necessary to reimburse materials purchased from the Bureau of Facilities that were ultimately used by activities in the Bureau of Operations.
Motion to approve. Very brief discussion, please.
Second. Discussion, Councilman Kraus?
Yeah, is anyone here for this this morning? I just, I'm curious as to why this would not just be off the interdepartmental transfer, why we're doing this in a separate piece of legislation, although it appears that this was all transferred within the Department of Public Works, just to different portions of the department. Do I understand that correctly?
Yes, that is correct. There is someone... There is someone.
I think that's good. I'm sorry.
Now, I was gonna say there's, we have people that can speak to it, but what you outlined is correct, Councilman Kraus.
Okay, I'm I'm good. Thank you. If I have further questions, I'd like to uh write to the department director. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill nineteen sixty-seven.
Bill nineteen sixty-seven, resolution providing for an agreement or agreements with SAI Consulting Engineers, Inc. for costs associated with the preliminary engineering phase for the Larimer Avenue Bridge, providing for the payment of the cost thereof not to exceed one million two hundred forty-one thousand five hundred seventy-three dollars and seventy-three cents, reimbursable at ninety-five percent.
Motion to approve, brief discussion, please.
Second.
Discussion, councilman?
Thank you, councilman. Yeah, I'm just curious. Is someone here to speak to the bill? I'm just curious as to who's doing the reimbursing.
I do not see anyone currently here to speak to this one, Councilman Kraus.
Okay, I can ask my questions off offline. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Well, actually, Jeff Wright. Thank you.
Scalik.
Scout. Thank you. Jeff, Councilman Kraus?
Is Jeff here?
Yes. Rowan, bill nineteen sixty-seven.
Larimer Avenue Bridge.
Good morning, everybody. I'm Jeff Scalik and Deputy Director, currently Acting Director for DOMI.
Hi, Jeff.
How are you?
Uh, good, thank you. How are you? Just curious as to who's doing the reimbursing at ninety-five percent.
Uh, so this project is, sorry, the project is eighty percent federal, um, ten percent, I'm sorry, eighty percent federal, fifteen percent state and five percent local.
I see. So our our portion is the five percent, ninety-five is a federal and state.
Correct.
Great deal. Thanks, Jeff. Appreciate your help.
Sure.
Thank you. Councilman Schlossberger?
Yeah, I just wanted to find out where we are, like what what the preliminary engineering phase actually means and what this means for the sort of timeline of this project. Just I know a lot of people, a lot of people in the East End have been keeping their eye on this bridge and um has it gone through all the sort of like state and railroad related kind of bureaucracy there?
Okay, so this is to go into contract with SAI. It's a consultant firm to start the the design process.
Oh, we're so we're right at the very beginning. Got it. Okay.
So you'll be hearing a lot from us in the community.
So this is a, we expect a three-year process?
Um, we're not there yet to know exactly how long it will be. So as soon as the consultants onboard, they'll be able to tell us like what right away issues there are, if there's any impact to, um, if there's a railroad involved and stuff like that, they'll be able to get us more involved, exactly what is needed and what type of project that is. If it's a rehab replacement, something like that. So we'll get a better timeline about six months to a year.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. I may think, yeah, I have lots of other questions as the design goes along. It's not in District Eight, but I still have questions relative to the, yeah, yeah, because of the the proximity. So, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill nineteen sixty-eight.
Bill nineteen sixty-eight, resolution providing for a supplemental agreement or agreements with KCI Technologies, Inc. for costs associated with the Twenty-Eighth Street Bridge Project, providing for the payment of the cost thereof not to exceed nine hundred seventy-two thousand one hundred dollars and ninety-three cents, an increase of seventy-two thousand one hundred dollars and ninety-three cents to the amount previously authorized by resolution five fifty-eight of twenty twenty to add additional funding for the for preliminary engineering phase of the project.
Uh, motion to approve, brief discussion, please.
Second.
Discussion, councilman?
Yeah, thank you, Jeff. Here for this as well?
Sure. Now, this supplement, oh, sorry, apologize. This supplement, it's the complete boring intestine of the soil. Um, we're still in the early design phase of this project and this will be able to tell us if we can use the existing abutments on the bridge that is there currently there. So that's what this supplement is for.
At seventy-two thousand plus, right?
And that's, this is the same thing. So it's eighty percent federal, fifteen percent state, five percent local.
That's great. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Sure.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill nineteen sixty-nine.
Bill nineteen sixty-nine, resolution providing for a supplemental agreement or agreements with Wellington Power Corp. for construction services associated with the CBD Signal Phase Three Construction Project, providing for payment of the cost thereof not to exceed four million one hundred seven thousand one hundred thirty-eight dollars and twenty-three cents, an increase of two hundred forty-five thousand one hundred seventy-nine dollars and eighty-eight cents from the previously executed agreement as previously authorized by resolution two oh three of twenty seventeen, reimbursable at eighty percent.
Motion to approve, please, brief discussion.
Second.
Thank you, Jeff. Might as well do all three.
Sure, this one is different. So this one is, the project is completed. This was to replace seven signalized intersections in downtown Pittsburgh in the Central Business District. Um, this was a PennDOT oversight uh project that was eighty percent federal and twenty percent local. So it's, we get, we receive state money for bridges. We receive no state money for um uh traffic signals and roadway projects. Better way to explain it.
Uh, just as a sidebar, um, the Eighteenth Street Signal Project is coming to completion. It's pretty amazing to see how it all comes together in the final couple of weeks. But um it's been transformational uh and uh really much appreciated. I I know how hard we've worked on that and that's years and years and years and that too is a PennDOT project. Uh, but pretty amazing to see it all come together. Just wanted to offer up a thank you for for the work and the effort.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation.
Thank you, Jeff.
That takes us to Human Resources Committee chaired by Councilman Burgess, one supplemental paper, bill two thousand and one.
Bill two thousand and one, resolution providing for the formal recognition of Indigenous Peoples' Day in the city of Pittsburgh as the second Monday of October to honor and appreciate the plight, contributions, culture, survivance, and achievements of the indigenous communities in and around the city of Pittsburgh.
Motion to approve.
Second.
With discussion, councilman, Councilwoman Warwick?
Yeah, sure. Thank you. Um, so, yeah, just to give a little bit of history about, you know, why we're doing this now. Um, uh, the conversation started with some constituents that were concerned, had questions about the the Columbus statue in in Shenley Park. And um, you know, what's going on with that in terms of the current lawsuit and appeal that's going on? And so, and and you know, and what the future might look like there. So that that's how the conversation started. Um, we reached out to the Council of Three Rivers American Indian Center um and spoke with Miguel Sagay as well as Fitzhugh Shaw, who's a local um Native American artist. So um, that's when we realized that we didn't have, you know, Indigenous Peoples' Day officially recognized in the city of Pittsburgh. Uh, we looked into it and back in um two thousand fourteen, Reverend Burgess, Councilman Burgess, introduced a will of counsel. Uh, he also had worked with COTRAC and the Human Rights Alliance that recognized it on October twelfth of that year. Um, and in that will of counsel, there was a commitment to um to more formally recognize it in the future. So that's, you know, that that's where this came to pass. I think it sort of goes without saying, I suppose, that it, you know, as a nation, you know, we recognize the atrocities committed against our indigenous communities uh through colonization and slavery and whatnot, whether stolen lands, Trail of Tears, you know, and even in very recent history, taking of children and the abuse that happened in boarding schools, um, as well as honestly, current voter disenfranchisement that's happening, you know, right now, today. And uh, and also as a nation, you know, we value the contributions of indigenous peoples just to the fabric of our country, right, in terms of labor, technology, the arts, you know, all these, all these kind of things. And here in Pittsburgh, uh, uh, you know, we honor the, so here, my understanding is that in this area, the Seneca, Lenape, and Shawnee nations were here in this area and continue to be. And uh, you know, there there are twenty states across the country that that recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day. Uh, Pennsylvania is not one of them, unfortunately. Uh, but, you know, here in Pittsburgh, it seems pretty straightforward, seems like the right thing to do. And uh, yeah, and I, and thank you to all the council members who, you know, co-sponsored. Anyway, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilman Cargill?
Just quickly, um, I agree, it's a good thing to recognize, but you had mentioned Columbus. This has nothing, this bill today has nothing to do with the statue. I know it sparked the interest, but.
Yeah, that's what that's what sparked the conversation that led to this, right? And that is a future conversation that we are going to continue to have.
Right. Okay, fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Schlossberger?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Councilwoman Warwick for her leadership here and to say that um, you know, I think there's probably more worth exploring in this vein as well and um knowing that, you know, there are municipalities, states, countries that honor the heritage of the land that they're, you know, conducting their business on before every meeting takes place. I mean, there, I think there are other things that be are beyond just the symbolic, even the symbolic uh sort of uh gesture that that is, that we can explore as well. And so thank you for for this and, um, you know, may we continue to explore the opportunities beyond that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That takes us to our new paper, which is bill nineteen fifty-five.
Bill nineteen fifty-five, resolution providing that the city of Pittsburgh enter into a professional services agreement and/or contracts with Pittsburgh Event Childcare for professional services in connection with onsite childcare being provided to city of Pittsburgh employees during the days that school is not in session. Additionally, offsite childcare will be provided for those attending community events sponsored by the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services and providing for payment of the cost thereof, cost not to exceed forty-five thousand dollars.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Good discussion? Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you. I'm wondering if there's someone here from the administration who wants to speak to the bill?
Good morning.
Hello, Paula.
Thank you so much. If you know, give us your name and title and we can give us a little bit of background.
I'm Paula Callerman, Director of Human Resources for the city. So um, some of you are probably aware, we used to offer childcare similarly to this for when Pittsburgh Public Schools were closed, to offer a service to our employees who didn't have somewhere to take their children those days so they would be able to still come to work and know their kids were safely being cared for. So this is bringing that back into fruition as well as providing um for evening events and community meetings hosted by the Mayor's Office. So like the budget community meetings, the, I mean, there's a multitude, but just to give an example of the budget meetings that are upcoming. Um, so once this is in place and we have a contract, we'll be able to provide those services to community members as well.
Wonderful. Thank you. Um, so I'm really, of course, supportive of this. As you know, we just had the post agenda. I think everybody here was at the post agenda last week about um supporting childcare businesses across the city. So citizens aren't on two-year waiting lists and that the city has had several different funding programs that have supported childcare centers across the city, especially throughout the pandemic, um, especially even more so in the last two years. That have increased wages, increased positions, and increased the number of children served for the participants in those programs. And this is just kind of one thing that we used to have and we kind of, I guess, lost it during the pandemic when we were all working remotely. Um, so I'm grateful to see it coming back and also to expanding it to those evening programs, especially where we know that it's always a decision, like, do I go and take my kids and try to manage them while I'm also participating in my citizen's duty? Um, lots of us have lived through that in our various capacities, either as just residents or as um members in office. Um, so I appreciate that and I'm just eager to see how that works out. I appreciate it. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman Schlossberger.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, Paula, and thank you to the administration for bringing this um, the service back. I think it's incredibly helpful for civic participation. We hear all the time, like, it's just difficult for family, people with families to to be able to make it out to evening events or weekend events. And um, I feel that, I can understand that. I feel it myself as well. And um, so anything that we can make it, anything we can do to make it easier for people to participate when they want to participate in civic, their civic responsibility, that's great. Um, and I I do remember that the previous organization we were, the previous company we worked with, Flexible, they had to fold because they just didn't get the corporate support. And so, do you happen to know if this organ, I don't know much about Pittsburgh Event Childcare. Are they, are they getting traction? Are they seeing other corporations that might not offer in-service childcare, like, also utilizing them? Like, do we, is there any conversation to, like, help them stay afloat like the other wasn't able to?
I'm not sure what they're doing as far as other corporations, but they do have certainly, they're doing well, it seems now. They are a um, a couple that started this. And what they do is they offer like non-traditional hours. Um, they do a lot of care just that's non-traditional. They also care, um, I don't want to speak on a turn, but she's, if if she's a, she works, her former position was, I think, pediatric nurse. It was definitely medical. She has experience caring with um for also medically fragile children and children with different abilities, which I think is important to say now too. So I would have to talk with them further about if they're doing anything similarly to what they're going to be engaging with with the city.
Okay, that's great. And then I know previously it was, you know, it wasn't, um, when we offered this, it was kind of downtown focused, but like kind of the best we could do for the days that PPS was closed. But, you know, we had, um, the city did not have a day off. Um, so it was offered, I think, just here at the city county building. Is where where will this, you know, where will these services take place on those days? Where will be be able to, where will workers from across the city be able to and how will that kind of work?
We're still ironing that out as far, it used to be um in our conference room on Human Resources, room four forty-five. And we would retrofit it to make that work, um, which is still a possibility that we're considering. And this agency, they do a lot of onsite pop-up centers. So they have all the specs for that. They they have a whole procedure that they follow to come out and look at the site in advance. Um, they have all the safety protocols, numbers, so it, I guess, that's to be completely determined. But I know four forty-five, our conference room, is definitely still an option for with, for our city employees.
Okay, and so that would mean that um likely employees, especially if they worked like at city planning offices, would have to just work from the city county building for that day and be in the same building or is that, or are they, is that not going to be a rule or do we not know that yet?
I think in the past that we did have some that worked in other buildings bring their children and drop them off, like they would have traditional daycare and then come back later in the day. But I would anticipate that that could be the possibility this time too, moving forward. But again, we're still working on all the logistics.
Okay, okay. How soon is this up? Specifically, are you having, are you offering this next Monday?
We need, we need the contract in place first.
So, well, probably not.
But we do, we do have monies for the remainder of the year. Um, I'm sure you saw that in the legislation. So as soon as we get the contract signed and ready to go, we're going to offer it.
Okay, good. Thank you so much.
Councilman Cargill?
Yeah, oh, you know, I think Councilwoman Schlossberger really covered most of my questions. And so, but let me just uh dig into it a little further. So so we foot the bill, meaning we we pay private childcare for, it's private, right? But they come to our building. We're gonna maybe set up here, which is great to have the facility here. So is that how that works? Is uh, we would just pay, you know, private childcare services? We don't train or we don't have the childcare services within the departments.
No, they are a trained licensed, they're licensed caregivers. And as I mentioned too, they also have experience, which is great with medically fragile and children with different abilities.
And specifically, if they were to set up shop here, and what room did you say, four forty-five?
That's where it used to be in room four forty-five, our HR conference room.
So it would only be for city employees? Like, the childcare, whoever's running the childcare facility can't, won't be taking on other children, other, it's strictly for us.
Yeah, that's for city employees when Pittsburgh Public Schools are closed um and they don't have care for their children. But of course, the evening community. But of course, the evening community events would be onsite pop-ups where those events are being held and that would be offered for community members that want to attend.
So, we set up the location kind of at the same venue that the mayor is speaking at, or?
Yeah, that's, that's the plan for those.
Okay, good, thank you.
Councilwoman Warwick?
Yeah, I, I also just had questions about, you know, how it would work and that's great. I don't know if you want my kids in your conference room, but.
We'll, we'll take them all.
You, you probably will, one of these days. But anyway, yeah, so, so that's great, that's exciting. And just to say, last night, we had a big community meeting and we had childcare. And it was, I mean, we got a massive turnout and that was a, that was really a big part of it. So, now, as far as this being for meetings that the mayor's office would, would, would council members also be able to access this for meetings that we're, you know, within our districts? Or is it, will it just specifically be for meetings that the mayor or that neighborhood services are hosting?
Let me get back to you on that one.
I was going to ask that.
Yeah, no, this is great, this is really super, so, thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That moves us to Land Use Economic Development Committee, which is chaired by Councilman Wilson. We have one paper, Bill 1979.
Bill 1979, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title V Traffic, Article VII Parking, Chapter 541, General Parking Regulations, by amending Section 541.04B, entitled Smart Loading Zones, to increase the maximum parking duration and by revising Section 541.04C, entitled Smart Loading Zone Rates and Penalties, to include a new four-tiered pricing structure.
Motion to hold three weeks.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill will be held one week. That takes us to.
Three weeks.
Three, I'm sorry, I apologize. The next bill, I'm going to ask for a hold for one week, that's what I was thinking of it. Recreation Youth and Senior Services Committee, which is chaired by Councilwoman Strausberger, we have one paper, Bill 1980.
Bill 1980, resolution repealing Resolution Number 428 of 2023, effective July 9th, 2023, entitled Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to enter into a professional services agreement with Homewood Community Sports for community liaison services at an amount not to exceed $300,000 by repealing it in its entirety.
Motion to approve?
Second.
With discussion?
Great discussion.
Council President reached out, she would like to have a hold for one week.
Motion to hold one week?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill will be held one week. That takes us to Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs Committee, which is chaired by Councilwoman Gross. Our first new paper is Bill 1957.
1957, resolution amending Resolution 351 of 2020, which authorized the mayor and the director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into a memorandum of agreement with the URA, HACP, Pennsylvania State Historic Preservation Officer, and 327 NNL-C by further authorizing an amendment or amendments to said memorandum at no cost to the city by adding 327NN Rotunda LLC as a signatory.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 19.
Mr. Chair, would you mind if we read the Council District 6 land transfers altogether?
Sure.
And then we can just kind of get them all out of the way? So, that's, Madam Clerk, that's 1958, 1959, 1960, and then on the next page, 1962, 1965.
Well, that.
Do you want to do them separate?
Yeah, because I was going to ask you if we could read all the Pittsburgh Land Bank bills together.
Oh, so that would also add. Okay. So, which ones, I didn't underline those ones separately.
58, 59, 60.
Okay, perfect. So, I'm reading.
Those three together.
Okay, the next three.
Bill 1958, resolution approving execution of a contract for disposition by sale of land between the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh and Pittsburgh Housing Development Corporation for the sale of Block 26P, Lot 185, in the 5th Ward of the city of Pittsburgh, 830 Adelaide Street, Council District Number 6, at no cost to the city. Bill 1959, resolution approving execution of a contract for disposition of sale of land between the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh and the Pittsburgh Land Bank for the sale of Block 9M, lots 273 and 274, in the 3rd Ward of the city of Pittsburgh, Bedford Avenue, Council District Number 6, at no cost to the city. Bill 1960, resolution approving execution of a contract for disposition by sale of land between the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh and Carnegie Mellon University for the sale of Block 29A, lots 306 and 314, also known as Parcels 2A and 9, revised in the Pittsburgh Technology Center Plan of lots number 2, in the 4th Ward of the city of Pittsburgh, Technology Drive, Council District Number 6, at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve, brief discussion?
Second.
Thank you. So, these bills are all going from the URA to the Land Bank, but city council has to approve the URA dispositions. And so, I don't know if we want to bring, so, I think the URA is in the room, thank you, URA. And so, why don't you go ahead and come up? We might have questions for either of these bills or the, the next bunch. There's, just for the public, there's a whole sequence of URA bills in the committee today. Appreciate it. Introduce yourselves for us. I'm sorry about the microphones.
David Geiger, Director of Government and Strategic Affairs at the URA.
Thank you, Mr. Geiger. So, if you want to tell us, I have two questions, just to recap for us. I see some of these are to, it just says between the URA and the Land Bank. And then, so for those ones, I would ask, like, do we know if there's an intended end user already? And then, the third one says, the contract is from, between Land Bank, URA, and Carnegie Mellon. So, I assume that is the end, the person?
Yes, for the, the Carnegie Mellon, the CMU bill, that's actually not running through the Land Bank. That's approving a sale directly between the URA and CMU. The other seven bills that the, the URA has in committee today are approving sales between the URA and the Land Bank.
Thank you. I apologize, so right, 1960 is not Land Bank. It said land and I just like, my eyes saw Land Bank, but it's not Land Bank. So, the, the first two that are URA to Land Bank, are these occurring under the second amended co-op that council finally approved after discussing it for a year?
These sales are actually not part of the tri-party agreement. The reason why the URA is in front of council asking for approval of the sales that are in front of you today between the URA and the Land Bank is because per redevelopment law, the URA needs approval of the city to sell any property that is located in a redevelopment area or acquired using certain funds. Set, so we have seven sales between the URA and the Land Bank today. Six of those seven sales are because the properties are located in various redevelopment areas throughout the city, and one of them is due to the funding source that was used to initially acquire the property.
And what was that funding source?
That was the RLRF, which is the revolving land, I can get back to you with the full answer.
That was already impressive.
I was going to say.
I'm already impressed, that was very, very clear.
Sure.
And I really, that's exactly what I wanted kind of everybody here, but also the public to understand, is kind of like, wait, it says Land Bank, what is happening here? So, that, that was perfectly clear, thank you for your answer.
Absolutely.
And then also, the, are the two that are Land Bank, are those, they're in Councilman Lavelle's district? Are they kind of, do you know if they're going for any specific use? We've seen in the news that some lots are being transferred, community gardens or affordable housing. And I, I don't have notes in front of me on all of these dispositions.
Yeah, so we have, I believe, four of the Land Bank transfers are in District 6, as well as the one directly with CMU, as we discussed, that one is going to go to CMU. There are intended end uses for the ones in District 6, as well as the two transactions in District 5 and the transaction in District 9. Would you like me to run through?
Seems like you have it in front of you, so that would be, that would be amazing.
Would be happy to, so.
If he's going to run through them all, why don't we read all the bills?
Okay.
That way, he's discussing them all on the table.
Perfect.
So, Madam Clerk, if you would also read Bills 61, 62, 63, 64, and 65?
Bill 1961, resolution approving execution of a contract for disposition by sale of land between the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh and the Land, Pittsburgh Land Bank for the sale of Block 56B, Lot 326, in the 15th Ward of the city of Pittsburgh, Hazelwood Avenue, Council District Number 5, at no cost to the city. Bill 1962, resolution approving execution of a contract for disposition by sale of land between the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh and the Pittsburgh Land Bank for the sale of Block 9M, Lot 171, in the 3rd Ward of the city of Pittsburgh, Ledley Street, Council District Number 6, at no cost to the city. Bill 1963, resolution approving execution of a contract for disposition by sale of land between the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh and the Pittsburgh Land Bank for the sale of Block 56P, Lot 72A, in the 15th Ward of the city of Pittsburgh, 5113 Little Street, Council District Number 5, at no cost to the city. Bill 1964, resolution approving execution of a contract for disposition by sale of land between the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh and the Pittsburgh Land Bank for the sale of Block 50G, lots 49 and 129, in the 10th Ward of the city of Pittsburgh, Rosetta Street and Hillcrest Street, Council District Number 9, at no cost to the city. And Bill 1965, resolution approving execution of a contract for disposition by sale of land between the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh and the Pittsburgh Land Bank for the sale of Block 9S, Lot 200, in the 3rd Ward of the city of Pittsburgh, 1843 Webster Avenue, Council District Number 6, at no cost to the city.
Do we need another motion to approve for this bundle? Motion to approve, brief discussion?
Second.
Thank you. So, now we have all the bills in the committee and, again, you have the chart. So, I think we, we're all curious.
Sure, yeah. So, real briefly, the Adelaide Street property is going to be sold through the Land Bank to PHDC, as well as the Shenley Heights Collaborative for an affordable housing project that they're partnering on. The Bedford Avenue property is intended for a side yard and the, the adjacent resident. The Hazelwood Avenue property is intended for City of Bridges Community Land Trust as part of an affordable housing project that they're working on in the neighborhood. The Ledley Street property is for Amani CDC, similarly for an affordable housing project that they are working on. The Little Street property in Hazelwood is for Hazelwood Initiative for a playground project that they're currently working on. The Rosetta Street and Hillcrest Street properties in Garfield are for Allegheny Land Trust for the existing Hillcrest Garden Project. And the Webster Avenue property is being offered as a side yard to the adjacent three residents.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And just for the record also, I have to give Mr. Geiger credit for always looping in council members, always sending me the notes as well, even though I didn't have them in front of me just now, and making sure that the community understands what parcels are being transferred and so that there's, there's buy-in. And I just want to make sure I say that because that hasn't, all that communication hasn't always been perfect. And it's, it's, it's really great, everybody's very happy, so appreciate it.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing.
I have a question.
Councilman Burgess?
What is the, what is the, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't have the notes in front of me. What is the parcel in my district for, shot, in District 11?
Reverend Burgess, I'm not sure if I heard your entire question, but if you're asking, the, the sale in your district is on Rosetta Street and Hillcrest Street. It's to Allegheny Land Trust and it is for the Hillcrest Green that currently exists.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Any further discussion? See, Councilman Kalkiel.
Sorry, I may have missed this. First of all, thank you for clarifying those properties. I was looking at it thinking, oh, boy, the Land Bank is on the move, right? Because of our tri-party agreement that we agreed to. But so, are the rest of those properties that Councilwoman Lavelle had you read, are they part of that tri-party or no?
No, none of these properties are governed by the, the tri-party agreement that council had discussed in previous months. These are sales between the URA and the Land Bank directly, which is governed by our MOU directly with the Land Bank. I would say that all of these properties were identified and placed into that transfer process after the tri-party agreement, you know, passed through council. In recent months, we listened very closely to what council members wanted, what community groups wanted to see running through the Land Bank. And so, once that process had taken place, the URA sort of looked at our active pipeline of property dispositions and tried to identify which of these properties are consistent with what we heard as part of that conversation and could run through the Land Bank instead of the more arduous and difficult URA disposition process.
So, the agreement will come into effect, not right now, on these properties, but as we advance and move them?
The, the agreement won't govern these properties specifically, but that agreement will be executed very soon and then it will allow the city to go through a similar process to what the URA just did, which is look at potential sales or transfers that would have gone to the URA for property sales out of the city's reserve and say which of these are consistent with the conversation we just had and which now makes sense to go directly to the Land Bank instead of the URA.
I thought I saw last week some transactions also. Well, since we approved the tri-party agreement, have we had transactions? Have we moved, has the Land Bank acquired?
City council has approved entering that agreement. I believe we are very close to executing that agreement, but I don't believe it's executed yet. I believe maybe what you saw coverage of was the URA board taking action on these exact properties at our board meeting a couple of weeks ago. We need to take action to approve the sales and transfers and then we come here to council to get final sign-off.
Okay, understood, thanks.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That takes us to our last bill of the day, Bill 1976.
Bill 1976, resolution requesting the approval of an inter-municipal transfer of a liquor license from El Paso Mexican Grill Bethel Park LLC, located at 1778 through 1780, North Highland, North Highland Road, Pittsburgh, PA 15241, to the applicant, El Paso Mexican Grill, located at 564 Forbes Avenue, Pittsburgh, PA 15219, pursuant to amended Pennsylvania Liquor Code, Statute 4-461.
Motion to hold for cablecast public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill will be held for cablecast public hearing. That takes us to our meeting announcements. This afternoon at 1:30, council will hold a cablecast public hearing on Bill 1072 as relates to the Lawrenceville Mobility Enhancement District. And that will be chaired by Councilwoman Gross. Speaker registration closes at noon today. Next week, council will hold its regular meeting on Tuesday, October 10th at 10:00 a.m. and the standing committee meeting on Wednesday, October 11th at 10:00 a.m. Speaker registration will close at 9:00 a.m. the day of the meeting. To register to speak at today's hearing and next week's meeting, please call the clerk's office at 412-255-2138 and/or fill out the council, fill out the form on the council meeting webpage. Also, on Tuesday, October 10th, council will hold a briefing as relates to the PPS strategic plan and the first session begins at 1:30 p.m. and the second session begins at 2:00 p.m. And on Thursday, October 12th at 11:00 a.m., council will hold an executive session as it pertains to legal matters. Is there anything else from members? If not, motion to excuse the absent member, approve the minutes, and adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.